County Board of Supervisors April 16th, leaving notice and agenda with posts in the government center buildings, places, posts on the county website on April 8th, 2024, and was published in a legal newspaper the week of April 8th. April 8th, 2024, 4:00 a.m., the office was 3rd.
That complies with the opening.
Roll call, please.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Warrendal.
Here.
Cam Garvey.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Jeremy Hall.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Tony Johnson.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Fran Dunkinson.
Here.
Russ Arkhand. Keith Kirk.
Here.
Don Bonaprise.
Here.
Stand. In the allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, deliberate, and just for all. Keep reading the top thing. I want to say I'll send them a break again. The, uh... Mr. Chair, move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
That's that final in favor. All right. I have...
With them.
I have one change in the, the, uh, agenda. We have a presentation of Resolution 2024. Case, we'd like to have the presenter be able to present her information for us at this time so that we can accommodate her as rest of her. Disagreement with that, we're moving that up, Etsy. Very none. Presentation. Thank you both. All in favor of that amendment to the here.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Disagreeing? Okay. Where is she?
I am. I'm actually remotely today, so thank you for having me. We have some pretty nasty thunderstorms heading our way, so, um, I think I can share my screen with you. Perfect. Well, again, thanks for having me. My name's Kim Johnston, and I work with the PACE program here in the state of Wisconsin, and PACE stands for Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy. It's a program that was developed in partnership with the Wisconsin Counties Association, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, the State Energy Office, Green Tier Legacy Communities, Slipstream, the group that I work with, and Von Briesen and Roper, a local law firm here. And about eight years ago, they, they identified that, um, communities needed an economic development tool for commercial property owners to finance energy efficiency, renewable energy, water efficiency, and resiliency measures to the commercial properties. So what CPACE is, is fixed rate long-term financing, or what they call green financing. Commercial property owners are able to finance 100% of the hard and soft costs of a project. It's a non-recourse type of financing, so it frees up their equity for other priorities. And by fixed rate, long-term, I mean anywhere from 20 to 30 years. The term of the life of the loan is based on the liable measures that someone decides to put into their property. So 30 years is on the very long side, and that would be for something like solar. But we're looking at 22 to 23 years usually for, for fall windows, variable speed drives. I sound like an energy geek, my apologies, but things that are building shell and are energy efficiency in nature. It also is able to be transferred upon the sale of a property, so that's something that becomes really important to commercial property owners in general. Across the state, we have 54 participating counties. We are trying to get to everyone as we have projects come on board. I'm speaking to you tonight in Polk, but we also working with Richland and Kewaunee because they also have commercial property owners that have come knocking on, on the county's door that have said that they'd really like to use this as part of either an adaptive retrofit to new construction or existing project that they currently have. Right now, in Polk County, we do, um, have something, uh, that's in a pre-application state, in Friedrich, for a senior living facility that would like to use PACE financing to update their property. So eventually, hopefully, we will get to the whole state, but we will try to, um, get to counties first that they have projects that would like to use the, the pro, the program already.
Good news.
And, yes, do you have questions ahead of time? Please go ahead.
Anyone? Go ahead. You call.
Oh, my apologies. I thought I heard someone raise their hand. Um, and, and again, if you have questions as I go along, please do, um, do, uh, reach out and, and let me know. So PACE works for all commercial property owners. It's healthcare and hospitality, industrial or multifamily or five-room re-units. It works for agribusiness where we've seen a lot of solar, um, go in on dairy farms. Hospitality, hotels, uh, ice skating rinks in Spooner, Wisconsin, um, bowling alleys that have done solar on their properties too. It does work for not-for-profit and office buildings and mixed-use buildings too. So the different types of projects are available for new construction, so right out of the gate when you're starting with a, a new, um, facility. It also works for adaptive retrofit, so if you have an existing property that used to be, I'm going to pick on one of your neighbors, um, that used to be a, an old hospital. We have, um, in Clark County, they are turning that into a multifamily, um, complex using PACE as part of the debt stack to do that. It also works for energy-efficient equipment installation, which we have an example like Hardwood Flooring Company up north that, um, has replaced a boiler that, um, had consumed an excessive amount of water, um, over the year, over the years, which is by putting in new equipment and financing with PACE, they have a longer-term payback time, and they're able to pull out some equipment that probably is bordering on maybe 60 years old. Now, the only thing that it doesn't work for is residential property owners or governmental properties, so I'm sorry you can't finance using PACE, but, um, that would make it difficult if something were ever to go wrong. Um, also, some of the eligible improvements that we see a lot of are lighting systems, both indoor and outdoor, uh, building controls, building envelopes, furnaces, boilers, and chillers, heat pumps, variable speed drives, uh, heat recovery, which we see in larger municipalities. And recently, over the last year, um, the state of Wisconsin has allowed us to add EV-charging infrastructure and charging stations and batteries, uh, along with fuel switching. On the renewable energy side of the house, uh, solar PV is a liable measure, battery storage, biofuel, biodigestors, although we haven't financed any yet, and also wind. So anything that would be renewable energy in, in nature would be able to be financed with PACE. You probably want to know where the money's coming from. There are 29 different participating capital providers in the state of Wisconsin. So far, we have a couple more looking at the program. They're a mix of local lenders, regional lenders, and national lenders. Each of them have a specific market sector that they like to work in, but, um, there are several that work across, across the markets. So, um, you can see a couple in there that are specifically ag-focused, like Farmer Savings Bank, um, and I believe there is German American State Bank that does a lot of our agriculture or agribusiness, along with Comp here. But the other ones do lend to almost all markets too. And then finally, this kind of gives you a, a high-level overview of what types of projects we've done, and my apologies, we've, we've closed four projects just this year, so my, my numbers aren't up to date in this graphic, but, um, hospitality is, is a larger user of the program, simply because they can save both water on water efficiency and on energy efficiency, so it's actually lowering their, um, their cost of doing business by updating some of their, um, older mechanicals in their building. We also see a senior housing, um, which is, has an uptick, multifamily housing, and it works for everything from senior housing, um, student housing, for example, in Oshcrash and La Crosse, um, or general, general housing that you might see, um, in your own neighborhood, like affordable housing too. And I did toss this in here because this is something that's in everyone's community. Uh, they do need to be five-room re-units, um, and the loan sizes usually run anywhere from 100,000 up to, we can go up to 50 million, although we've not seen that in the state of Wisconsin. I believe the largest loan that we have incorporated in the program yet to date has been close to 10. And this kind of gives you a, a broad, um, view of what our typical terms are. The loan term can be from 10 to 30 years. 30 years is on the long side, and that would be for the solar. And again, the loan term is based up what measure they included in their project. So there is a handy little equation that is the useful life of each individual measure, and then we put that into the energy audit, um, come up with the, the loan term. The interest rate isn't cheaper than your local banks, but you won't have to reset the debt, so this, um, is not going to take out, um, your regular mortgage, which I, I call the gray area. No slant to any bankers that happen to be in, in the room. It's, it's just your standard mortgage on the property. The green part is the PACE, and that is just for the energy efficiency, the water efficiency, or renewable energy portion of the building. And then the light blue is usually someone's own equity that they have in their project. Um, some people don't have any equity in their project, and would just be, um, carrying PACE debt and mortgage debt. I'm sorry, I think there was someone there. Did someone have a question?
Not that I'm aware of.
Sorry, I may have a little feedback. My apologies.
I have a question. Are you ready for a question?
I think I'm super close. Go ahead.
Okay.
So how many years has this been in place? Did you say eight?
Well, we started developing it eight years ago. It's been an existing program for five and a half, close to six.
So what are, are you seeing, what are you seeing from the people that have participated so far? Have they been making their payments and...
We haven't had a delinquent payment even during COVID, um, which, uh, given the number of hospitality that we had in our, in the state's portfolio is, is really impressive, um, because they weren't at full occupancy, you know, but, uh, people, um, pay this loan first because it's in first position.
Because that gets paid before, if they would believe that that gets paid before...
It does.
A bank or anybody else.
Absolutely. The PACE sits in first position. It's like a very expensive sidewalk.
I do see PACE does offer residential though. It just doesn't offer residential in the state of Wisconsin?
Residential is only available in three states in the U.S. so far, um, California, Missouri, and Florida, I believe.
Yeah, that's the same.
We are not big proponents, or I should say, I'm not a big proponent of residential PACE, because usually resident, residential property owners leave their, or move locations more than, you know, the, the usable life of the measure, so they're really not going to get the benefit that commercial property owners get out of it.
So, so that's not like phase two or something?
Oh, no, no, no. I, I don't believe, and, and this is my own personal preference, um, I don't believe residential PACE will ever come to Wisconsin. And if so, um, it wouldn't be part of this PACE Wisconsin program.
And, and at one point, in reading about this, this is stuff I got up to the website. It says, "The local government at times will issue bonds to fund projects with public purpose such as streetlights, sewer systems, underground utilities." Is that something that's been done in Wisconsin, where the local governments are issuing bonds?
It has not, um, because PACE is, um, a private, um, private funding. So literally, there is, um, the great benefit for, for counties, large and small, is that there is no cost for the program itself. It's basically another economic development tool for you.
What about, one last question. What about, what do you see, the counties that are using it now, have they higher, had to hire additional staff to manage all this?
Oh, no. So the, what we, we have done, even with the, the larger counties, is they have a, um, a commission member that is appointed, and this is just a, another economic, really, development tool for the cities, um, municipalities that are in the county. So information to put in their packet, it's, it's another thing like TIF or historic tax credits or something else that can be of use for commercial property owners. It also works in conjunction with Focus on Energy, so it's not either-or program. You can definitely use both, and I do encourage commercial property owners to use the tax money that they've already put in. So they have, um, a lot of programs for multifamily out there through Focus. They can definitely use the free incentives first and then use PACE for the portion that might be left that they need to finance. So in essence, it's helping them build a better building.
I found it interesting that you said 20 to 30, 30 years would be, up to 30 would be a solar project, but we've gone through having, uh, uh, we have a lot of information that we've gone through on solar because we have someone looking to put a big solar, um, farm in our area, and, uh, and we were told that the average, the average life expectancy of a solar panel is 20 years. So if they're funding for 30 years, then what happens after 20 years when the solar panel's all going bad?
Well, so, inter, so that kind of plays into the next thing. I probably didn't finish all of it, but part of the statutory requirements for the state of Wisconsin's program is it does need to have an energy assessment. So anything over $250,000 for a loan needs an energy assessment to go with the PACE loan. Um, it's basically ensuring the property owner that, um, the measures are going to last as long as the loan value, because a lot of these aren't, aren't, um, with resiliency measures that we added on, that state of Wisconsin added in, uh, about a year and a half ago, um, they're not actually going to be saving energy, they're going to be adding energy, um, like EV charging infrastructure. But for the original thought process behind PACE was that a lot of, um, commercial property owners are offsetting the costs, their energy costs, by updating their HVAC system or low-flow fixtures, so they're saving costs on energy and water, and they're then able to have more operating capital to pay that down with newer mechanicals in the building. That's a very long answer to your question, and my apologies. Um...
So, none of the counties are encouraging any staff time then?
No. Mm-mm. We, we do, um, require, um, a representative from each, um, participating county. We do meet, um, every third Thursday, um, from 10 to 11 as a PACE commission. Now, again, as long as they, um, comply with our program guidelines and they have an energy audit, it goes through our engineers to make sure it's vetted, um, and then the loan is, uh, approved through the PACE commission, and it goes through, um, the green financing lender. But it needs to be approved by the commission before it can actually come to fruition. And nothing goes to our commission without a solid energy, uh, assessment, not it.
I just have a quick question. I see later, later down on our agenda, we have an appointment to the PACE committee. That's the committee that you're referencing right now?
Yes.
Okay, and that's not a staff?
No, um, it can be your, your board chairman. It, it could be, um, someone on your finance committee. It can be someone in the economic development. Um, unfortunately, we, um, had, uh, four individuals that did not win their races, um, during the last election, so we had a little bit of changeover. That's not a terrible thing. It just means that we need to provide additional education for the, the new representatives of the counties when they come in. There's a handful of counties that have decided to, um, use their economic development director for the county, um, as their representative, but you as a county, um, should decide who you would like, um, to represent you in, in that function, but that doesn't mean that, um, that the full county board can't be, um, good stakeholders, um, and educators in the market that, that can share with the, the local chambers and the economic development directors from each of the municipalities, um, that sit in the county, um, because this is a tool that especially a lot of the smaller municipalities, um, have found really helpful. Again, my answers are so long, I'm so sorry.
We have considered that already. I think we've got a pretty good resolution that, if everything goes along. Okay, anybody else have any questions? None. Thank you very much for your presentation. We'll be...
You're very welcome.
Very long.
Perfect, and if anyone has any other questions, I believe my, my email was on the, um, PowerPoint. Or here is a resource for you, um, either way.
We'll get a hold of it.
All right, thank you. Bye.
Hey, thank you. Uh, number six. Matters offered, uh, for adoption, uh, need a motion on that?
Motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
By, well, did I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Okay. Did you get that? All right. Any discussion? In favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, same, sir? Question carries. The, uh, public comment. Please list your name, where you're from. We limited to three minutes.
My name is Rhonda Miller, and I live in the town of Bone Lake. Congratulations to the new people that are sitting on the board and back to the rest of you. Every meeting that you preside over includes making important decisions that in my family, friends, and my neighbors. Your job is not an easy one. You balance the worker workings of Polk County by making decisions to grow our county, to protect our county, and, and protect our county from outside influences that would change our way of life that we enjoy, and yet preserve our county for all of us and our children to continue to live, work, and play here. I was here last month and was taken aback by the impersonal way that our board heard from the public that had concerns, so I'm surprised that I was allowed in the room with you. You were sitting in one room, and the rest of us were sitting in another room. Is that truly the best way to communicate? Through a lens of a camera? Through a microphone? And being seen on a TV screen? I know that today's youth like it best to communicate through texting. It seems like that is their mode. The phone is always in their hands. But studies show that they are the loneliest generation because they have lost the face-to-face contact of people. That way of communication is not the best way to communicate. I can only speak for myself at that last meeting, looking into a lens. I felt very distant from you guys. Very disconnected from you guys. It made me feel like I was not worthy, and I didn't have the right to enter into your presence, and that you really did not want to hear anything that I had to say, or that you even respected me. When talking in person, the give and take of, uh, facial expressions and the ability to read body language is an integral part of communication. That is why I am here today, to ask respectfully for you to go back to in-person, just like this, public comments. There are many people, if there are many people in attendance, then use the overflow room, but give the people a chance to speak to you face-to-face. Thank you.
Any other comment? Being none, we'll close public comments. Move on to eight organizational factors we have to select. For chairman, first vice chair, chairperson. Make nominations for the...
Steve, can I ask a question? The point of order, the bill, uh, Malia? Excuse my pronunciation.
Oh, yeah.
Two years ago, we, we did multiple voting, and that doesn't seem like it should be the right way to, to do it. It should be just the chair. It should be first chair and second chair, not group voting.
I, uh, had a, I was out of the county two years ago. I don't recall, uh, what the voting was like. I believe that was before things were on video, so I guess I'm unsure of the question you're, when you're saying multiple. Are, are you s...
The, uh, motion was, um, they put the chair and first chair and second.
So you voted all three on...
Three, and all three at once.
Yeah.
I, I guess it would have to be whatever motion is made. I would highly recommend you separate them.
I think we should take longer to time.
Right, separate.
I thought that's what we did. I called, I'm calling.
I have three minutes.
Um, well, we'll take nominations for the chairperson only.
I'll nominate Jay Luke. Supervisor Luke.
I'll nominate Supervisor Sharon Kelly.
Hey? Any other nominations? I learned today we don't have to repeat it three times.
Twice. Twice just to be...
Twice already. It's twice.
We have ballots.
Hearing no more, I'll close the nomination, and we'll have the ballots.
Do you have secret ballots?
Well, I...
Yes.
That will be...
I had them ready. You guys copied with the administrator one last time, but I was ready this time.
You want Steve to text me his?
He can, I, that's up to the attorneys. We've been...
Did he vote?
Sure, extra email.
Did he vote remote?
Yes.
Yeah. You can...
I'll do it any way you want, I guess.
You can text it to me, Steve. That'd be great.
All right.
No. No, this isn't the usual handing it out.
And he...
We should have gave us three very ways.
I didn't open the file.
No, it was left.
Oh, yeah.
No, she's not much younger. Fan away. We are, we have a date set.
Fan off. Oh. Uh, Chairman Luke, congratulations. You are the chairman again.
To count.
10 to 5.
Thank you for your confidence. Hey? Uh... Need nomination for first vice chair?
I'll nominate Supervisor Bonaprise.
John Bonaprise has been nominated. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Very none? I cast a unanimous ballot. You want a secret ballot? We can do it by voice. Let's vote all in favor of Bonaprise. Vote all in favor of Bonner Price as first vice chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Congratulations, Joan, vice chairperson again.
Thank you, folks. As best we can, hard and willing. Interesting committee thing is, is that want to represent everybody.
I nominate Russell Arkham for the second vice chair again. Any other nominations for the second vice chair? Any other nominations for the second vice chair? I have a voice vote, all in favor of Arkham for the second vice chair. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, please second vice chair. Moving on with the agenda. Committee, need a motion to go into committee as a whole.
I make a motion, we go into committee of the whole proceedings.
And second. Any discussion on that motion? On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hey, we're in a committee. We've got our facilitator taking care of everything for us.
Good evening, chairman. Good evening, everyone. Uh, congratulations to those of you who won, which I guess would be all of you. Uh, it's good to see all the familiar faces again, and those of you that I don't know very well, I'm looking forward to getting to know you. My name is Tim Anderson. I am the county planner here uh for Pol County. And I've been part of the uh committee selection process for the last few rounds, uh so I've been invited back. Uh, maybe some of you regretfully, but I'm back uh for your uh enjoyment tonight. Uh, the process that we're going to use tonight is very similar to a process we've used uh several other times before, so. It's been successful, at least we feel it's been that way, so we're going to repeat that process tonight. Uh, before we get into selection process, uh Claire, can you pull up the this presentation? Uh, before we begin, I just want to make sure that everyone has their packets uh that has uh the supervisor contact information. County Board Directory, payroll calendars, holiday calendars, and the descriptions of the standing and non-standing. We've got all in. Committee structure information might be helpful as we go through this, but I'll try to give you a good background on on the standing committee piece of this. Why are we all here tonight? Well, we've had an election, so we have some new supervisors on the county board, which also means that we're going to have some new committee assignments, so. For those of you that are unaware, the county board has five standing committees. You can see pictures of them right here. We have the environmental services committee, executive committee, government committee, public safety, and public safety. In addition, uh there are uh twenty non-standing committees uh and lake district appointments for each of you as county board super. So plenty of opportunity to uh spread your wings and have some fun on some committees. Okay? Next slide, please. For the standing committees, and that's what I'm going to be talking about, we'll talk about the non-standing committees at the next meeting. Well, tonight we're talking about those five core committees. There's twenty-five total positions in those, so we have five committees, memberships per committee. Five of those twenty-five is dedicated to the executive committee. We'll talk about what comprises the executive committee towards the end of the slideshow here. Want to let you know that five of the twenty-five are dedicated to that. Based on the election results, we have six current vacancies on the remaining four committees. And in your rule of order and what we've talked about previously, it's been um that the preference is to have each of you as committee members or as county board members be on a maximum of two standing committees. Is that always possible? No, but that's what we like to shoot for. That way, everyone has an opportunity to be represented on a committee. And we have five new supervisors, so welcome to you, new five, and looking forward to working. Next slide. Before we get into the process, I just want to give a quick overview of these five standing committees what their meeting schedule has been like and what they, they oversee, what they govern. So the first one, in no particular order, other than var, and then uh alphabetical, would be the environmental services committee. Um, that typically meets the first Wednesday of the month at nine AM, however, I guess that could change in the future. And historically, they've had enough um matters at hand that they've had sometimes second meetings, which usually happen the third Wednesday of the month at nine AM. Environmental Services Committee oversees uh zoning, their deeds, for forestry planning, our land and water resources, uh real property listings, surveying, GIS and mapping, so quite a few big core functions. The next committee, the general government committee, uh typically meets on the second Wednesday at eight-thirty in the morning. That committee oversees a lot of the internal functions of the county. The IT, finance, HR, uh the county clerk, county treasurer, and corporation council. Next, we have uh the Health and Human Services Committee. It meets on the second Tuesday at nine o'clock in the morning. Uh, and that committee oversees the entire community services division. Also, uh Golden Age Manor, veteran services, and child support. Public Safety and Public Works. It's typically the first Tuesday at two o'clock in the afternoon. They oversee the law enforcement functions, the jail, highway and facilities in Engleview. And lastly, the executive committee, which typically meets the second Thursday of the month at nine AM. And that's made up of the chairs of the other standing committees, and that will get talked about again a little bit later on in the presentation. Next slide, please. Okay, so the current um the this is the current committee makeup, and one way of looking at it is how many committees do each of these supervisors serve on, and this is twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four board. E, we have six folks um that have one committee assignment, eight that had two committee assignments, and one that had three committee assignments, and supervisor Luke or chairman Luke, um you have the honor of serving out three because you were the chairman and you got the um executive committee along with two standing committees. Uh, next slide, please. Another way of another way of looking at the existing committee appointments um by uh membership. So we have the Environmental Services Committee. Each of those members were re-elected, so they're still fully comprised so far. The general government um have one vacancy, and then the final um slot for that committee uh per rules of order was filled by the county board chair. Uh, Health and Human Services had four vacancies as a result of the elections, and Public Safety, Public Works had one uh vacancy. This is how it looks currently. Next slide, please. Well, there's all the fun you've been waiting for, the actual selection process. Uh, the last time we did this, we just jumped into each of these three steps. It's felt like it would be best to showcase to you what the full process looks like, so you understand where we're going. This is a three-part process. First would be that existing committee members, those that have been on the board before, will get an opportunity to say, I'm on too many committees, I'd like to relinquish one. So if you're on two or three committees and you want to reduce to one, the first step in this process would be to say, hey, I'm supervisor, fill in the blank, I'd like to not no longer be on the Environmental Services Committee. And then you can be removed from that committee and just serve on one. The second option, the second step would be again for existing committee members to switch assignments. So if you're currently on a committee, you would like to be on another one that has a vacancy, you need to give up the seat on the current committee you're on to switch to that second one. Okay? And then lastly, all the remaining vacancies after we do the first two steps filled in by supervisors that are interested in serving on one of those committees. And we'll do that by a show of hands, and if there's more interest than there are slots available, then we will do voting to determine who's uh part of those committees. If the number of supervisors matches the exact number of uh vacancies, then they're just appointed. Any questions on that process before we go into it? Well, then let's get into it. Next slide.
Star.
Oh, there was the sign from God.
Nobody gets to reduce their committees. Again, I gave you a little bit of overview on this one, but this is meant to be uh an opportunity for any existing committee member to relinquish membership on one of the committees, so. Since this process is driven by the chairperson, Jay, I'll need you to ask for anyone this question, ask if anybody wants to uh bring up your committee assignment.
Well, I think there are some that as much of a commitment as as is assigned for at present time, Jeremy Hughes. Didn't you indicate that you wanted to cut a little bit of uh
That's not
of your committee, but not these ones, not the standing ones. On the standing committees?
This is just for the five standing committees, yep.
But you're fine with all your five standing committees. This one, I thought that's what you had. Yeah, I I got it. Just that I thought that you wanted to to eliminate even even one of them if possible. Oh, good. Good. Okay. I thought that was the comment that he's made. Other than the standing committees, he can be considered if he wants. Okay, oh, that's the question. Anybody that wants to change their committee assignments?
Reduce the number of standing committee aside.
To reduce the number of committees that you're presently on?
Mm-hmm.
To just reduce, right?
Just to
On the standing committees, anybody that would like to reduce the number of standing committees that they presently serve on? No, apparently they're
Everybody likes what they're doing.
With the committee assignments that they have.
Good, alright. So the next step would be uh switching committee assignments. Again, it's an opportunity for existing supervisors to switch from one committee to another where there are vacancies, so we can pull up that slide where there are vacancies, it would be Health and Human Services, General Government, and Public Safety, Public Works. Right now.
If you want to switch.
Again, you know, to relinquish your membership on one committee to jump to another one. That makes sense, and if there's more
Does is you've got a replacement if to
What's that?
Leave a void in your own committee.
Yeah, those vacancies will be noted and we'll we'll fill those at the end.
Go ahead.
For everyone's reference, these are the vacancies.
Yeah.
If you could just ask Jay if anybody is interested in switching committees.
Anybody want to switch committees?
I'll switch from Environmental Services to Health and Human Services.
My question is, how do we fill the
That'll leave a vacancy on the Environmental Services. So that'll be noted, so that when we fill it after we do the switching, it'll be filled after that.
Alright.
Elsewise.
Switch from Environmental Services to Public Safety, Public Works.
That from Jen Gov from Environmental Services.
Yeah. If you have that noted? Any other? Any other switching? Anything supervisors would like to do? Go to the uh selection slide.
And we're going to fill on which committee?
We'll start with Environmental Services, because now you have two vacancies on Environmental Services. However, you'd like to start.
Question about the process? So those of us who are newly elected, do we automatically fill in the committee spaces our successor or predecessors were in?
No.
No.
Who was? That is the only fireman served.
Jeremy.
Jeremy also.
We need to to supervise for Environmental Services.
And are you taking nominations?
Yeah, it's self-nomination, so those people that are requested
I'll I'll take Environmental Services or volunteer.
I'll volunteer. Okay. There's still open in three.
Okay.
Got them? Got three for two places.
Yeah, three, yep. Director Garvey, supervisor Calvin.
Alright.
So now we'll need to have a vote.
On Environmental Services.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to vote?
Same. Your discretion.
Voting for two.
Let's vote for two.
Vote for two. Individually, maybe?
Just put down two. Just put down two. easiest.
I get the vote, correct.
Yeah.
Yep. Can I have the name, can I have the names again, please? Yes, um.
And you certainly could entertain a brief statement from each, since there's a contest, to state why why they believe they should be on the committee.
Yes.
Anthony and Sharon.
Could we have a short comment from all three of them as to why they want to be on?
Well. You get the ballots. Alright, anybody that would like to make the comment on your behalf or your position on the Environmental Services
I will.
Well, I've had, I I was on the Environmental Services Committee for my pre, during my previous terms on the board, so I've got experience there. And um that I think it takes a while to get up to speed on that committee, because there's a lot going on, so I think that's, that's been helpful.
You speak, I'm 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 interested in being in the committee, because I'm interested in
I'm, I'm interested in being in the committee because I'm interested in both zoning and land and water and how it affects our county as a whole.
I'm interested, I'm in real estate the last eight years. I had to deal with land info, all the zoning, anything you can imagine. And having grown up on a farm, I understand PDFs and all that stuff, so.
Okay. I don't know more comments. You have a ballot in your hand, hopefully, and both for two.
The top two vote, although it was close, Sharon and Pam.
What are you on next?
We'll repeat the process for General Government. As there's
You want to go to General Government?
Like to. Three interested parties for General Government. Let's see, Fran and Kelly.
But do we want them to state?
Three.
Three for one spot. Myself, Sharon, and Keith.
Did you get that, Steve?
Yeah, I got it. Thank you.
Chairman Luke, did you want them each to make a statement?
Yeah. Put your hand up. Big K.
Well, I don't know, I, you know, I've been a town chairman for eight years, I've been on a town board seventeen years, I run a budget. I'm a small business owner, I'm a farmer, I've been in Polk County all my life. Got a degree in finance and economics, I can work with numbers as well as probably just thought.
My turn.
Go ahead.
Oh, I worked twenty-eight years in local government. As a city and village administrator, village clerk treasurer, city clerk treasurer. Even though I'm retired, I'm still a master municipal clerk. And I have been a certified treasurer in Wisconsin, done multimillion dollar municipal budgets, capital improvement plans as well for cities in Wisconsin. I previously served on the General Government Committee when I was on the county board prior. And I would like to go back and be able to serve in that again. I already have an established relationship with county auditors. And I went to school for accounting, is what my degree is in. And I am very familiar with and do municipal fund accounting inside and out.
And we're chair.
I had, I was on the General Government Committee my last time. And, and I don't have an accounting degree, but there's a lot of other things that go on in Gen Gov besides finance that works on budgets, but it works, we work on a lot of other things too on General Government. And I feel that experience that I had previously, I months ago, so I'm pretty much up to speed on what's been going on.
Just voting for one. Just voting for one. Just voting for one.
I write all three names on it, that's why she won't hand the ballots out. All three names on the ballot.
Eve, are you still on line?
I am.
Can you send your vote?
Can you read your text?
No.
For two.
Oh, we'll know. I'll be back.
Yeah, I sent it.
Vote for one.
Sorry about that. You got it.
Is it drum roll or tap dance?
I'll do a drum roll.
Welcome to General Government.
What was it?
Eve.
Big K.
The next committee will be Health and Human Services. And we have two on that committee already, so we have three vacancies.
I think Fran.
Tony and Fran.
Any other interest? Three vacancies.
We have, how many are open?
Three. We have Johnny is on from last term and then Brad moved to so we have three openings. Tony and Fran have expressed interest so far, so we need one more.
And what committee are you on?
I'm on Environmental Services.
So what three are open?
We have one more vacancy on Human Services. And so we need, if you're not going to nominate yourself, the next thing will be somebody else should nominate you.
Who's, who's already nominated?
We have Tony and Fran, and so they're just going to go in. We don't even need to vote because there's more spots than volunteers. So now we need a
A third.
Third person.
I nominate Pam Garvey. You said you were going to retire.
You accept the nomination?
Sure, I will accept the nomination. And if there's no other volunteers, then there's no vote required. So welcome to Human Services.
Right. Do it.
And thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
I think that does it for committee assignments. Lastly, before we move on to the next piece, I just want to quickly go over Executive Committee real quick.
I
Some next steps.
So, so, okay, you'll go through that because then they'll need to come out of committee of the whole and adopt what you all have all decided.
Yep. So we could go to the next slide. So the final standing committee is the Executive Committee. As I alluded to before, this committee is populated by the chairs of each of the standing committees and the county board. So we won't know the composition of this committee until you guys all meet as standing committees for the first time and elect your officer. Just wanted to make sure that that's
So it's the four standing committees and then the county board chair. So, so the only person that we know is on executive is Chairman Luke.
Well, this is an example of what the Executive Committee looks like. But our can, General Government speaking, Chairman Don, like Warndall. First committee. From the Congress, Chairman of the Committee. And the last one was held by Middleton.
Yes, Chair.
For the Executive Committee. Last five, the next five. As I said, the committee membership will be determined if you guys need that standing. Any questions on the Executive? Five? The next steps for standing committees will be the non-standing committees. You have information about what those standing, non-standing committees are in your packet. Please review those and let Chairman Luke know of your interest and we'll decide those at the next county meetings. As I mentioned, the county board, the Executive Committee, since its membership will be final next because you guys will have met between now and the next county board meeting. So you'll know who chairs of each of those respective committees are.
The Executive Committee doesn't meet necessarily as much as the other standing committees. But they are the ones that do the review of the administrators' performance. They also are the Ethics Board. And then if there's a conflict between committees, then they serve as the conduit.
Alright. That's all I got for you, thank you.
Now we've got to act on those
Out of the committee of the whole.
So we have to adjourn committee of the whole.
Make a motion, we adjourn committee of the whole.
Second.
Move to the adoption of the rules.
Are there going to be a vote on coming out of the committee of the whole?
We're going to vote on the committees that were
You vote to come out of the committee of the whole?
We did.
You moved, but there was no vote. That's okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Now let's, need them open to approve the committees as presented. I move as presented.
Second.
Does anybody want any discussion on or a list of who's on what committee? Who is exactly what you're voting on? The exception of the Executive Committee. I can go through it.
Do you want to just, Claire, do you want to just populate that slide again? Sorry.
Internet's slow. My God. You sure you don't have Century to link here?
Be them from our broadband.
Yeah.
Can we just go through?
I don't think that's working very clear. And just read the list.
I'll just read them. How about?
Just read.
Alright, so Environmental Services, we have Kim O'Connell, Tracy LeBlanc, Doug Rowdy, Sharon Kelly, and Pam Garvey. General Government, we have Russ Arcan, Dan Ruck, Keith Karpinski, Jeremy Hall, and Jay Luke. Health and Human Services, we have John Bonnaprise, Brad Olson, Tony Johnson, Fran Duncanson, and Pam Garvey. Public Safety, Public Works, we have Steve Warndall, John Bonnaprise, Jay Luke, Doug Rowdy, and Jeremy Hall.
Do I understand that with that in mind? All in favor of the resolution as presented? If you can find a saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Okay, there, approved. Now we have to look at our rules of order.
Uh, we're asking you to go, a motion to go back into committee of the whole?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
And seconded to go back to committee of the whole. Any discussion on that? Ayes.
Aye.
Okay, we're in committee of the whole again for discussion of our rule of the board.
And just for those of you who might not be aware, committee of the whole is where the rules of order are relaxed. Sometimes here in Polk County, it's hard to tell the difference between when you're acting in committee of the whole and acting as regular county board. That's the theory, so you don't have to raise your hand and be recognized. And it's more of just a group discussion. That's why it's yeah. So at the end of the final, or the final few months, the previous county board, specifically the Executive Committee and then the county board, made some recommended changes to their rule of order. What Chavanna and I did as the county clerk, she and her office are the ones who are primarily impacted by deadlines and, and things like that that exist in your rules of order. And so we made some recommended changes just based upon ease of information for staff, getting agendas out, not having to amend agendas because we put the agenda out so far in advance and then other things came up. And so the Executive Committee and the previous county board made these recommendations as things were considered. We will pull it up here in just a moment so that you can see, I believe we have the red line version, so you can see where the changes are from the old way. And these are all, again, just recommendations. This is your opportunity as a new board to set your own rules, to decide how you want to conduct business. Some of the information in here talks about committee assignments and what their areas of oversight are. We would recommend not necessarily changing it, any of those, because those are pretty tried and true and they are consistent with our division form of government. Some counties don't have divisions, they just have a whole bunch of department heads. We've placed most departments that are not standalone departments in divisions for ease of governance, for ease of understanding for the board and the administrator. Right?
Okay. Some have already gone over these, these ones.
Yep, each committee looked at the parts that pertain to their that committee board and then some of these, again, are staff recommendations to make life easier for staff and easier for you truly.
You want to we'll go through each one separately, starting with, uh, C of, uh, of two, do you want to follow these all the way through, all the red lines, so that?
A lot of them are, again, cleanup and recommendations of just procedure in the background. Uh, if, if you would like to go through each change, that, that's completely your call. These are recommendations that the previous board had, so everyone who is previously on the board should have seen this at least once. Um, and so, maybe the new folks, if they have questions, I, however you, as a board, and you, Mr. Chair, would like to address, recommend a change.
Do it on, on, uh, at least a page at a time and, and see if there's any questions or comments about anything on page two.
The one we should, everybody should be aware of is, um, D. It was the recommendation that you needed to attend a meeting in person to be paid. If you were going to do it virtually, you should attend the meeting virtually, but you wouldn't get a per diem or or smiling.
Of course.
But everyone should be aware of that, and you should all either be in favor of it or opposed to it. That's one that someone wants to comment on, should talk about.
Go ahead, talk about it.
Um, so, I certainly would agree that they would not get mileage. However, I think that if they're a duly elected board member and they're attending virtually and they get to vote, that they should, they should get their per diem as well.
It come about though, um, because of COVID and the restrictions distancing, that's where we started virtual meetings. And before that, if you didn't attend the county board meeting, you, they could send the sheriff to pick you up and bring you.
All right.
So, it's pretty mandatory that you attend these meetings.
Yeah.
And, I mean, if, I mean, I don't know if we all agree if COVID's over or not, but if it is over, we should be here. And we heard from the public tonight, they want to come back in this room, be with us. So, I, I don't know, I, I never attended any meetings virtually. Missed some meetings, but I've never attended a virtually, but I don't know if it, I mean, Steve, what, you know, they're gone, anybody that has attended a virtually, I mean, do you, are you participating or, you know, are you more listening or? I don't, I, I didn't. I was in favor of this, that would count.
It's not the same experience when you're online.
No.
I understand that, but, you know, uh, sometimes I can get a two and a half hour, uh, Wisconsin County Highways Association Board of Directors meeting. So, you know, those are the kind of things where if you're going to spend two and a half hours, I think, and they're virtual, I think you should get a per diem for spending that much time, uh, you know, doing extra work beyond your committee assignments. So, I have mixed feelings about it.
So, Steve, this, this D only applies to the standing committees for county board and the county board meeting, not the outside ones. There are some that are held only virtually, we wouldn't be able to police those. So, the language does say specifically that the standing committees and county board.
Okay, well, you know, every year in April, I have to miss this meeting to be somewhere else. And I've attended every, every meeting in my four years of being on the board, so for what it's worth.
How do you, go ahead, Johnny.
Well, a year ago, I had fifty-five cancer treatments in Arizona, Castagrand, Arizona. And I attended all the meetings either on phone or I went to South to our, uh, to our main office and I done a ton. That's great. And, uh, I think that's, it's probably more of an effort than, than when I was actual, uh, in person. And so, I, I definitely think, this gal that was here, I'm moderator now, she was just telling me, I was asking her about when our, our, uh, meetings are going to be for the steering committee. And she said the last steering committee, last month, everyone was, was virtual. So, we're doing the same amount of business, and boy, with the technology nowadays, we should, you know, if you got another conflict or something, I don't think that anybody should be penalized for that. Um, I, I don't see any reason why anybody shouldn't get paid if they're, if they're doing their job, they're listening to their people, they're representing their people. And, uh, everybody's going to try and be at every meeting they can, but this is just in case of a, a conflict and, and I think everybody has something once in a while. And, uh, yeah, you wouldn't get mileage, but you, you should get paid by, same as anybody else who participated.
I'd just say it should be just uh, chairman's discretion. You know, if somebody hurt, broke a leg, me, I was sick also, like John, had to miss some. Uh, that would be the time, otherwise, we were voted to come here.
Yeah.
We were voted to come here, you signed up, it is, we've got the dates, uh, the times for our meetings are setting up. You either show up or you should have ran for the office.
I think that's a big question.
That's for me, that, I'm saying, that's why we ran for office. You should show up. If you don't want to be here, you shouldn't have ran.
Dan?
I think for, obviously, COVID was the driver behind this, but if you talk to anybody in business today, they will tell you that net meetings are less than, less than fifty percent effective as compared to in person. And too many times, when there's net meetings going on, there's too many other distractions, you're not an active participant in a meeting like you are when you're here. That's not the same for everybody, I'm just talking as a general business practice today, they're going away from net meetings because they're not as effective.
Doc, did you have comment?
I just agreed with John and Steve that, that the only meetings I've missed since I've been on here in eight years is when I got a hip replacement and when I had COVID, which was a month ago. And I, I took all my shots, I did everything so I could be here, and we got, my wife and I both got COVID. And after that, I had a disc input in my neck, and I couldn't be here that night. And I, I don't know what yours, I guess it's a, I'd say for, at the chair's discretion.
I agree, a chair's discretion.
So, when we go back into session, um, this is one we should earmark and change it if, when we're back in session. And if, if the majority wants it to be at the chair's discretion.
Yep.
Because it could be any one of us could have something.
Yeah.
And but that's the time to.
Because you don't.
I'm fine with the chair's discretion, but what's the chair's discretion? It better be consistent. I mean, if it's a health issue, that's, I'll, I'll say that, that's an easy one, but if I'm off on vacation, that's not really. And again, when we get into our meeting portion, we can't make a change
We can't either.
In committee of the whole.
Right.
We're going to just talk about it.
Okay, we'll discuss that again.
Definitely, everybody marked that one, that, so when we get into session.
Page three.
Wait, on page two, I got another one on, on, I just questioned on E, that very last part of the sentence where it says it's about the county board chairperson's reimbursement request shall be approved by any county board supervisor. Wha- what does that mean? Any of us, you just send them to one of us and they get approved and we approve them?
Yeah.
Yeah, they come to the county clerk's office and then usually.
I usually leave them there.
But the chair signs off on everybody else's, so when somebody else stops by, then I have them sign off on.
The chairs.
Yeah, just the chairs, yeah.
He could come to me, he could come to you.
Yeah.
To, to sign off on, he has to, someone has to sign off on.
They're still reviewed by finance.
But you're re-.
Yeah.
You're reviewing it first.
Between me and finance.
None of us know.
What he actually did.
Yeah.
We know.
And that's not a change.
At J.
It's always been.
Yeah, I just questioned it when I was reading it, because I thought, that's kind of.
Page three.
There's nothing crazy, just enough language.
Page four.
Um, I have one thing on page four and it's just a, it's just a typo error. It's, um, one, two, five, six sentences down, and it's the fourth word from the, from the right going in. It says the representative are drawn, it should be, is it represent, the representatives?
Which one?
I'm sorry, I mean. It's, it's part B, uh, number B, and it's the sixth, one, two, three, four, six sentence down. And if you go from the right in, it's the fourth word in, it says the representative are drawn from, should it be representatives are drawn from? With a S? It's just minor.
Where are you at? What page are you on?
Three.
Page four. Page four.
Four.
I thought.
Sorry.
Or B.
Yeah, that's just a typo.
Yes.
It's just a typo, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
You should have this one.
I do.
Anything else on four?
That needs to be changed?
It'll be corrected.
That, yeah.
All right.
Page five.
Page five. I've gone F three.
Yeah, I have that circle too.
I think that should be struck.
Yeah.
One, two, three lines.
Which, which?
A former supervisor shall be subject to a rule three years later. I wa- I'd like to see if, what they think of that, that should be struck, I don't.
I agree.
I don't think lately we can go back a year on somebody.
Or should we?
Nor should we.
Do you want to discuss that one?
Well, even now, people should have their thoughts, so we don't wait over during the meeting. That's why we have committee of the whole. What does everybody think?
Agree.
Agreed.
Anyone disagree?
Right, the whole thing.
Well, we can't do, again, we can't do anything here, just note it that.
Note it.
When we go with, uh, they want to strike the whole number three?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Should we enforce them if we wanted to?
That, right, it, it would simply be a public shaming rather than any, anything of actual consequence.
All right, well, we'll discuss that and also. Anybody else? I don't think one's. Page five. Page six.
Page six, I want to say the ethics board shell. I think we should.
Which number are you?
Second one, the afterpowers and duties of ethics.
Yeah, that's four.
Okay.
But that's a pretty bad deal. I think if you read Robert's Rules, this is all supposed to be an executive committee and not out in the open. Because we have records of the ethics board should not be closed, they have to be closed. It's the same as an employee.
Yes, they're not closed, you're going to get some potentially, potential liability, I would think.
That's it's in Robert's Rules, and it's pretty short and sweet in Robert's Rules.
So, what line, Kim? Page six?
Well, the key, the records of it, for sure.
About the.
But I mean, uh, this verified and all this other stuff, I think we should just refer to, uh, Robert's Rules and go by their way of doing it, that it's always in closed session.
Are you saying everything under the ethics board should be?
Ethics shell should just about be out of there, down to employee protection, because that's about what.
From where to where now?
Where are you at? What page are you?
Six.
Six. Page six.
Okay, from where to where? E three.
Right there.
Down to. And you're saying to strike it from rules of.
All of A to G?
Yeah, K shouldn't be on there, A, B, all of that should be just referred to Robert's Rules so that it's done the right way. Because we have all this.
So, this was when we took your ethics code and incorporated it into the rules of order. So, this is old, old stuff, except for the certain highlighted things.
Yeah.
That Supervisor Middleton was, was recommending. But this is the actual ethics code, most of it is incorporated directly from chapter nineteen, Wisconsin statutes, specifically talking about ethical obligations, so I guess I don't understand.
All right, just take out K then, huh?
Is this the?
And it'll still put a sub under this line.
It's, it's a re, it's getting rid of the ethics code and plopping it in the rules of order, which is what the previous. Otherwise, where is it?
It's a standard.
In statute or? No. Is there any, is there a county policy? It was a.
Standalone.
It was a standalone. It was standalone, okay. It was standalone and, well, then we don't really need to have it in here, do we? The previous board is recommending. To put it in. To put it in. I, now I understand. I wasn't there, so I had to ask questions, so I understand.
Regular session. Okay, any more on page seven or six?
So, does, if it has to be closed, that shouldn't not be struck from K?
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah.
That would.
Has to be struck. It's an asking dollar, maybe.
Well, we'll discuss that after.
Yeah.
Page seven.
Just a second, Jay. Who did, who decides if it's a verified complaint in D?
That was added, the verified complaint, which is the language that was there before, was the word verified complaint, but how do you verify it? And so, we determined that the Corporation Council will advise as to whether or not there's sufficient information that would rise to the level of probable cause, which would again then be that definition of verified complaint. Not, not, not whether it's true or false, the complaint, but whether if true, it would rise to the level of violation of this code.
Is there? Is there?
Yeah, I, we just took out this, um, the part of Robert's Rules there and it just made a subsection, it's way at the bottom. So, it's in there, but I just moved it from this section, which now changed to the Code of Ethics, and that little strike of B there, um, for Robert's Rules, um, it's just moved to the very.
Any questions on that?
It's in there.
Anything else on seven?
Yeah, you can stop, if you see it's not part of the meeting, but down here under public comment. Right? And I had public comments to me before about the, having the virtual, uh, public comments. And personally, I'd like to see us go back to having that at the podium, so I just think we should look at it or think about it. It was, it was brought forward when COVID was on. Remember back correctly, we used to always use.
Else?
So, that's not defined within the rules of order, that's just been.
I know, it's not, I just wanted to have a chance.
Yeah.
Your public comments on. I.
Yeah.
Hey, Fran, did you have something?
Nope. My question, no, I was listening to answer my question.
I had one comment, seven, where we added, J, where it's added not be accepted. We have contradictory language later on. So, whether we up, if we update it one way or another, it needs to be the same. So, page thirteen, one, section fourteen says, there's public comment will be received by the clerk and we, and it was added not be, not be received, not be accepted, so however, it's a con- conflict in how it's written right now.
I think it's more just material, isn't it?
Right, it is about material, but one says it will and one says it.
Well, we're talking handouts during the public comment.
Not like a written. Like if she stood up. Like the comments will be accepted. Right. Right, but that, that, that section specifically talks about standing committees, the top one that we're talking about is county board specific. Yeah. So, they can be done differently, and we can change it to be the same if committees don't want, um, handouts, either, there was a whole briefing going to why we changed that to not accepting those handouts. Okay, my apologies then, I, I, I saw it as a, as a conflicting information, so I missed that it was two different pieces.
Who would then during public comment, if they had material, who would ask them not to handle? I mean, how would they know that they can't handle material?
We will control that at the, I think the chair controls the, uh, from. Chairperson shall be in the order. I would expect that if our laws are that we don't accept it, I think the chair can say, you can leave it with clerk.
It wasn't that we don't accept it, it's that they want them distributed to the clerk, not blocking.
Right.
Yeah.
In front of everyone handing materials on, I think is why.
Right, because they can certainly communicate with each of you by sending in, um, anything to that public comment email address, that'll automatically go to everybody. But if they're, you know, standing and handing out pamphlets and then everybody's reading the pamphlet, not listening to the com- comment, and it was, it was, I think.
The other thing was the keeping it either written or spoken. So you can turn in written materials as a written comment, or you can speak. So it was kind of a dual, they're speaking and giving out written comments, it was, that's why it was removed entirely.
It's disruptive if you got people doing.
It's versus a comment being a presentation.
Secure.
Yeah.
Materials this way.
Act on it anyway, so.
Yeah, 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 can't discuss it, can't act on it, so if you have them go around and pass it out.
You could take the, their three minutes and, uh, that was for the. Half the time to read it.
Yeah.
You've got three minutes to read the pamphlet and that's all. Can't say, say anything.
However, we've put words in here that say will not be accepted, right?
That's what it should be, it can be handled, I know.
I mean, they can still mail you anything, email you anything, it's not like they can't get the information to you, it's just the clerk isn't going to be like, yes, now I'm making this a part of our official record.
Jay, what? What Supervisor Rowdy was talking about, is that something that would be appropriate to talk about that now?
You could put it in your rule of order. That public comment is in person unless there's not enough room to accommodate, in which case we'll have an overflow room.
But is it appropriate to talk about that here?
If you wanted to mandate that, yes, you could add that to your rules of order, so yes.
We, we have kind of a.
Well, that we could get it in writing, we could take a break so we could write some of this and get it so that it sounds right. Environmental Services, we did it now because we count the seats and if there's that many people or class.
Right.
Public comment.
Because we're not taking public comment virtually.
No.
Oh, well, we're not taking it virtually.
Well, we're not taking.
The thing that they didn't realize, we've sat here, hundred fifty people standing. And move to Unity High School. Many times.
I mean, what even tonight, what they asked for. I know. Or what one constituent asked for was, if there is an overflow, absolutely use the room.
Russ, I got a comment. Uh, you know, if they have a hundred people there, then they'll have to designate people to talk if they're gonna be in the room with us and the rest will have to go somewhere else. We have a coordinator up there all the time, right, with public comment?
Right.
Right.
Yeah, so the coordinator then would ask the group, who's gonna be the representatives to be in the actual chamber and, you know, grant that, and the rest would have to go somewhere else if they're all part of the same subject.
Right.
Well, oh wait, ten people could talk at three minutes each because it's limited to a half hour. So there's twelve chairs, so the ten people that talk could be here and the rest would have to be in the room then or something or that.
Well, I think we need to write that into our rules of order, I think we just need a consensus that that's what's gonna be.
Gonna be got the future.
Unless we'll consider. At meeting. And for the ass. Bring it. Page eight.
This is where it talks about how a bill becomes a law. Uh, how you can get a resolution authored and drafted. The first thing is if the county board chair wants the resolution drafted, I will draft it. If the county administrator wants a resolution drafted, I will draft it. If neither one of those have an opinion on something, then a committee needs to tell me to draft the resolution. Um, and, and so that's, that's here. And then what we're gonna call a lot of these, the Brad Olson amendments to the.
Eight.
Uh, so if, if, if the county board chair or the administrator say yes, yes, corporation council, please draft Brad Olson's, um, resolution. And, uh, we draft that resolution, and then the resolution goes to committee. That's the resolution draft, once the sponsor of the resolution has said, yes, that's, that was my intent. That we're, so we won't keep redrafting a resolution, it can only then be amended at the county board chair. Again, once the sponsor says, yes, that's the draft I want.
Alright. Any other discussion?
And we just, we struck.
Just, just for the record, Malia, I've never had one turned down yet after they made this rule for me.
It's never gone through.
I never saw that particular one she's talking about until it got ready to go.
But if you have questions about drafting, it just wanna, wanna talk through drafting, even if it hasn't been okayed by the county, uh, board chair or the administrator, I mean, Mr. Lozo and I are, are open to having conversations about, you know.
Your door is open.
Yes, usually if, unless we're in court, which is why appointments are helpful, but if our doors are open, feel free to stop in.
Any more? Page eight? Page nine.
This is the work, county board agendas, I feel like I've talked about this a gajillion times, so most of you have heard this a million times. Um, but currently, the way it's set up about having everything, um, postmarked seven days before, which means the agenda has to be done, um, in many cases before some committee meetings have met. Um, therefore, it can either create amendments or there's, um, not full information, like the committee hasn't taken action on the resolution. So then I provide the resolution a second time later with that recommendation on it. So this is changing it to that, uh, that fourth day before the county board meeting, which is the Thursday, which would be always after, um, typically after the executive meeting meets, um, or executive committee. So that's changing that, and then, um, at that, it makes sense to mail them. Um, they are available online, they're available by email, um, it probably would not reach by mail at that point. And then we go into our.
Any comment or questions on that?
Just, um, motions, amendments and debates.
Yeah.
I think we added some language here, just so everyone's aware, because when we do go into regular sessions, if someone does start debating or talking about something, they're probably gonna get a, they'll get called on it. And that there needs to be a motion on the floor before there's any debate. And I don't know if we've been doing it wrong for many years, but I mean, the last meeting, we tried something different where.
It worked?
It seemed to work, but we, we bring a, a motion to bring the resolution to the floor for debate. Well, for debate.
Or debate is what I did.
And then after, there's so much debate, someone will make a motion to approve or disapprove.
Of that.
The resolution.
And then we make the motion on the. We first have to act on that. But she didn't, she eliminated that aspect of it.
Well, and we, here it has even more, either, if you know it's a, it's a routine or maybe a, non-controversial, uh, celebratory resolution, you know, motion to approve, second, debate vote. But if it's a controversial one, motion to bring it to the floor for debate, so you can have that debate before somebody makes a motion to either.
Just to.
Or whatever. So this, this would allow for either way. It's a perfect thing. Oh.
Okay.
So if I make a motion to approve.
It gets voted on.
It gets voted on, it's already done.
Yeah.
There's still discussion.
Yep.
Not if you vote on it, not if I say.
Not if you vote on it right away, but the chair should be asking for.
If I say bring resolution twenty-two ten up for approval.
Bring it to the table.
And I get second, we vote yes, it's approved.
If you don't vote.
But usually there.
You can still.
Usually doesn't count, it would be.
Debate.
Debate.
Right, debate will only begin after a motion has either been made to bring it to the floor or to approve. But debate will begin, so both instances contemplate debate, whether you're debating, bringing it to the floor.
Under motion, it better say debate.
Now it does allow for debate after a mo- motion to approve.
We fixed this so that either way you guys do it, was, then you'd be doing it consistent with your, your current rules of order.
Just, and it's ordered right then. Tell us that.
It is ordered right.
Debate will begin after a motion is made, but still, if, if, if the motion is to approve.
Yeah.
And it's seconded.
Then you do.
It's seconded, it doesn't mean you get the vote right away, you still.
Yeah, but if you vote then.
We'll talk later, Kim.
That way.
You're wrong.
I know that. Are you right though?
Still debated.
I might be wrong, but are you right?
But, but this would allow for either or, and the chair would need to control, okay, now discussion after there's gonna be.
Before the vote, somebody may want to debate and they.
Yeah.
But if you vote.
Debate it before the vote. Can we go on the next page?
Well, it's gonna come up, John, because it.
Well, yeah, it'll come up in open session.
Well, I mean, we, this is our only really opportunity to talk about it here.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're gonna be in session.
The way that I read this, and it seems clear to me, whether you bring it as a motion in second or you bring it to the floor to approve, there's discussion either way.
Yeah.
It's, it's that simple, that's how it's written.
No discussion will be done after a motion.
Exactly, but.
You make a motion to approve.
But if you bring a motion to approve, it's the same thing, this way it's written.
But you, but you vote.
Yeah, here.
No, you're not.
You're not, you're not. Until discussion's over.
Right.
What's the discussion's over?
Okay.
It's like you've been doing it the entire time until last time when we corrected it, you'd already been doing it this way.
Corrected that.
We're just.
That's the way she said it.
Correctly.
We did it. You just send them.
I think the way we did it at our last county board meeting worked.
This, this way?
Everything should be brought, a motion should be brought to bring it to the table for debate, motion to debate it. And then.
Could go either way after.
And then, yep, and then another motion.
The only challenge I'd have to that, Russ, is someone got the first motion to, to bring it to the, to bring it to pass it, you're not gonna get off our second motion until you either make a decision on the first one. Whereas what we're, what it's written for now, you're gonna have, be able to discuss either way. I, I agree with you, I think that worked better, but either way you can discuss, because if, if he happens to be the first one to jump the motion to approve, I can't add another motion to discuss, to bring it to the floor for discussion until that motion's ruled on. So you've gotta be in the discussion either way.
No, because you have to vote on the first made motion.
No, you don't have to vote, you'll make a motion and second, and then you'll open, the chair will open it for discussion.
Absolute. Chair will call for debate, and he does.
Well, we've always. Well, that's how we did it for years.
Yeah.
And then we got called on it.
We did.
And then, well, we got called on it because someone tried to make a motion.
Top of a motion.
Postponed indefinitely.
Yes.
While a motion was on the floor.
Right.
I can't remember, but it was.
Oh, yeah. We've done that.
It was some.
That's where it came from, so then we decided.
Motion, top of motion.
I thought we decided to never get in that situation again. A motion would be made to bring a resolution to the floor for debate.
And that was per the old rules of order.
The old rules of order stated it that way, but people, you got, you weren't doing it that way until recently. So we added language so that you could do it either way, but if you want, if you liked that, then we would leave it as the old rules stated. Because now you got, it sounds like you'll follow it.
So that's why it got called up, point of order, because previously in the rules of order, it didn't have that to approve or disapprove.
Because it said debate will only be, begin after a motion has been made and seconded to bring it to the floor, that was what your old rules said. And no one ever did that, they always did a motion to approve. So we now change it so you can do it either way. That's the suggested language, but if you liked how we were doing it, then we don't need to make any changes to the language at all.
I think we understand it.
I'm saying that. That would gather, there were gonna be seven.
Moving on. Page.
So what did that mean?
Um, nothing, touching page ten, except for we just added the four other standing committees of language.
Malia, I don't believe it can be an FSA representative anymore.
Right.
Or the designees, I mean, so that wording should probably change to whatever it should be, I'm not sure what it is, but. Just, I remember.
Member of the agricultural.
I think it's, I think it's, just needs to be an agriculture representative, but, um, it can't be an FSA representative.
I mean, it could be, but it, that.
Well, I mean, it.
Right.
Yeah, but they can't represent FSA, but yes, they could be.
So.
That was what they called that at the last meeting, what was that?
Right.
Just FSA won't allow it anymore, they can still be on, they just can't be an FSA representative.
Should be there.
And they're on as a voting member.
Have to change that or is this what we'll. Bring that up, Brad.
Bring that up as a change when we go into, Sasha, we're gonna do.
Remind me. Alright.
Page eleven.
On page ten, under voting. He, if the supervisor refuses to vote.
Just saying.
Or are absent or being excused, you'll have their vote counted as a negative, should we have that in there?
That's, that's out of, uh, Robert's rules, if you recall, there have been supervisors in the past who believed that simply by not making any noises during a voice vote, that they abstained without getting permission from the chair for abstaining. So their, their silence would be counted as a negative. Unless they have permission, if you abstain because there's a conflict of interest or some other appropriate.
And then their vote isn't counted, if I read that right.
Well, it counts negative.
If you abstain, it might still be a negative, no.
Same on a ballot.
Same as voting, no, I mean, if, if you're excused, your vote shouldn't count either way, it shouldn't be a positive or a negative.
It's recorded as an abstention instead of a negative.
Correct, and if you have permission from the chair because there's a conflict, then it's not counted either way. But keep in mind that amending the budget, for example, which requires a two-thirds vote, not of a majority of the supervisors present, but two-thirds majority of the entire board. So in that case, someone saying I'm going to abstain from this vote truly would count in the negative because you need at least a two-thirds vote of all members, so at least ten members, even if let's say only twelve members are present.
So we.
That's happened a lot, I remember in years past when, uh, there was a number of them didn't vote be, and they thought they wouldn't be passing the budget.
Yes, because they abstained, so I mean, it shouldn't be an automatic, then it's a no vote, I mean, basically.
We have to put a say no in there for the consideration. Well, there again is chairman discretion.
If you're excused, it has to be added, so where is it, the two-thirds of, not of the majority of the people at the meeting?
That's in chapter fifty-nine, specifically going to how you can amend a budget.
Only the budget, but how about anything else?
Anything else is two-thirds, uh, of the members present.
Of the members.
Budget is specific to.
Okay.
Right.
It'll be alright then.
Yeah.
Page eleven.
I don't think there's anything substantial. Just some cleanup language. We don't provide any written reports as of currently from any committees, so we just kind of clean that up.
Page eleven's corporate setting.
Um, we just kind of cleaned this organization up a little bit. Uh, previously, like especially with environmental services, we had that second date listed, so we were actually doing like notices of cancellation the entire, because it was a designated alternate date, um, so we're just kind of removing those. Um, and we are not doing assessment, I mean, we have work plans for all our committees, but we're not doing assessments on all of those. And, um, reports of the progress, we just follow the items that are on the work plan, that's not something we've done previously. And then some more cleanup language under.
The four days was added there too, wasn't it? Yeah, I see it, yep. That we get the materials at least four days so we can at least read, we don't walk in and get it all at that time.
Anything else on 12? 13. Get all the may.
All the may.
Yep.
Back to none of that. 14.
Some cleanup for ES, I believe this is um, specifying the agricultural program for UW extension, changing wind to all of those renewable systems. Um, designating that ordinance rewrite season that they've already been doing. And we did add that provision that if there's a tie vote in environmental services, because there's the six members, the five supervisors, and then our agricultural representative, that only the supervisor's votes will count, so essentially you won't have a tie.
Again, all right, page 15.
Just some more cleanup, uh, putting UW extension back into general government, removing Salvation Army, cuz that's not something we currently.
Uh, can I ask a question on number two there? F and G, do those still exist? I mean, I've never heard, I don't remember ever hearing anything from them or about them.
We provide funding um, annually to the Library Federation.
But they never come in?
They do.
They do?
They present uh, to general government.
Did?
Yeah. They've done their budget.
I forgot, I forgot I ever saw that.
For years.
I missed that.
They have a new plan, and it won't be coming in front of the board, but you're asking for a hundred percent.
Oh, really? Okay.
Anything else on 15?
Mostly just like.
No, let's go to number, I, I wanna ask about the general government committee. Number seven.
On 15?
Number three, number seven. May periodically review leases, so what's periodic? 15.
Page 15.
Number seven, I have a question on that too.
Some leases are five-year leases, some leases.
You know, we had a policy that we went down to one-year leases and stuff.
No.
No.
Dude.
But I mean, if they're reviewed, but what's periodically?
Within a reasonable amount of time.
What is that?
It's whatever I say it is.
So I'm gonna say one year, how's that?
I, I'm, I'm joking, but it's like when you're, when you're going somewhere in a car ride, how long is the ride gonna? I, if we're talking about releasing um, a part of our parking lot for two days for a gathering, that's gonna be a different review that you're gonna want as a board, and if your county administrator isn't bringing those MOUs and those leases to you in a fashion that you as a board believe is appropriate, so the big ones that are important should come before you as often as they need to, based upon the terms that are contained within the lease or the MOU. And if they're not, what this is meant to do is prevent the administrator or any division or department head from entering into an MOU, or at least that you don't know about, you don't hear about, cuz that's how things used to be. Now this is saying, they're gonna come periodically, and every period for each different type of agreement or, or lease is going to be different, and you need to trust the administrator and the staff that is advising the administrator that they're going to say, this one needs to be reviewed a lot more frequently than this one over here.
So I'd, I'd still like to put a year in there.
And you'll be reviewing thing, okay.
I, I'm saying it, it still says may periodically, periodically could be five years, 10 years.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it could be.
So how are we keeping up on that when the whole board could turn over and not even know there was a lease?
You hire the administrator, and you tell the administrator, make sure that.
The new administrator know how many leases are there right now.
You have, that's what I'm.
There's a lot of leases, it has, from leasing stuff on towers to leasing equipment.
Many of them.
Many different styles of leases, not just leasing space in this building and stuff like that, those are the ones we bring to general government. I'll say agencies leasing things versus operational leases that are done as part of.
Another responsibility of the administrator, like she said.
Maybe the, maybe instead of may, will periodic.
Shall periodic.
Yeah, sure, yeah, something like that, cuz may sounds like, well, if I feel like it.
No, I, I think changing may to shall is better than saying every year.
Oh, well. What we have to do at the high booth. Any other comments on page seven or 15? Page 16.
That's some more cleanup language, adding E D R C, who under, already um, budgetarily kind of falls under HHS. And then public safety, adding back in buildings and facilities, which somehow uh, got excluded in the last go around. Um, adding that CJCC in there, uh, per the last negotiations with the Fair Society. We also changed that um, to be Public Safety Committee instead of General Government. And then we kind of just took off that shall assign member of the, that committee, um, not necessarily somebody of that committee, it can be, it's already somebody is appointed to that board, so it can be anybody, doesn't have to necessarily come.
Good job.
Yeah.
Any discussion on that? Everybody's pretty capable with what's.
And then the very last page is just added back in that.
18 or 17.
I'm gonna give it.
And before we go back in the regular business meeting, going back to page two, this reimbursement. So we're not doing it on the floor of the county board meeting. Is what we're looking at is to add on to there unless excused by chair for illness or injury.
It's fair. Yeah, I think that, that mirrors what the discussion was.
Sounds fair.
So it isn't gonna be that you can be on vacation and go to J and get excused and attend virtually and get paid, it would have to be. I know, but it'd be just, so we got some language that we could all agree on.
That's standing committees and county board meeting only.
Okay.
Well, that's fine.
Mr. Andrew, yeah.
So someone is on a long-term illness or injury, they could talk to J and attend virtually and still be reimbursed.
Yeah.
Cuz there's a lot of committees.
You, you wanna add the verbiage illness or injury?
Yep, unless excused by chair or illness or injury.
Right.
Sounds good.
That's been.
The important thing here is, I, I think, Mr. Chair, we're all elected to represent the people. And by attending virtually and getting paid for it, we can, like I go to all the town board meetings, make a report on everything. You know, otherwise you would probably, so I'm sure some of them would miss that. This way here, you're gonna make your best effort to, to be there one way or the other, who knows the circumstance? And there's somebody besides you, you have your chair. He's a.
Okay, we need a.
Anybody make a note, or we're gonna have to go through all these, can anyone have a note on which ones we need to?
Oh, I just asked the ones that. Did you?
In the motion, can we say agreed upon changes? Or do we have to in the motion?
We have to make the change.
I think what we can do is read what we believe the consensus was generally, and then perhaps if that's what somebody wants to then move, wants to read what we believe are the.
Okay.
So move. It's like we're not supposed to.
So can you give us what them are?
So the changes for reimbursement is that first one, um, adding in the unless excused by chair for injury. Um, we have the discussion on the ethics section is the next hot topic. Um, specifically the fairness and consistency, and then section three.
You're on page five?
Yes.
That's striking number three.
Striking number three, that was pretty well consented, it sounds like, but there may be more discussion on it. Um, there was striking of on page six. Letter K, removing the not. Yeah. There was discussion on public comment, which sounds like may garner some more discussion, or were we good with?
Think public comment was gonna be left over.
Did we talk about that that didn't necessarily have to be in rules of order, that could just be like a.
Unaccepted decorum.
Obviously consensus, I don't.
For the public comment.
Oh, yeah.
It's limited to three minutes, so it ends up 10 people.
Yeah, we have 12 chairs.
Yeah.
Well, not necessarily, cuz we have additional people here, we don't have 12 chairs.
No, but.
They gotta stand in the hall.
And the speakers, they'd have to sign up, but then only 10 would get to speak if they all spoke for three minutes.
Some people might.
First served.
They might, but.
So you're no longer in committee of the hall?
No, they have.
Yeah, we, we wish to return to the hall.
Sorry.
I'm just trying to get a handle on what, when we go back into session, items we need to.
The public comment, if, is everybody okay with keeping it then?
Yeah.
It is, and then just.
I think the way we wrote it, that material wouldn't be distributed, and I think we were just talking about whether public comment was gonna be back going here or not in person. I don't think we need to put anything in here.
You don't have to, if, if you wanted to mandate, mandate it, you could, but it's really right now up to the chair, and if the chair wants public comment in person, and then the other room for over, that's all.
We'll know how many are here two minutes before the meeting, like we have. So right along, she had, had, kept us posted on what problem you're up with. And we make a decision that time, whether to come down here or not. We only got two chairs, and there's 20 people upstairs, probably best to stay here. But we decide that at every, like meeting. That's how she got down here.
Page 10.
Yep, oh, page nine, actually, that changing it back to leaving it as debate will only begin after a motion to bring it to the floor.
Okay, that's what we did last month.
That's what, that was the way it was done last.
That's the only.
We can change it back to that.
Do it.
Okay.
That right?
If, if you leave it like this.
I think you should leave it how we have it written.
Okay.
But some don't, some motions don't need to be, they just don't.
Well, this allows for debate whichever way the person.
So, so, so is the consensus then to leave it the way we have it currently drafted with, okay, okay.
We all understand that, no matter how the motion comes to the floor, can be debated.
Correct.
Page 10, we're gonna strike the FSA.
Yep, that was all consented, there wasn't anything contentious, it seems like.
I hope that negative vote.
Think that's the way it is.
They refuse to vote our supervisor without.
I'm gonna vote.
So does, if, strike FSA, if, is that person still a voting?
Yeah, yes.
Did you wanna change the word? FSA?
We could.
Yeah.
Yep, I have that, that was consented and not contentious.
Yep.
It's in another spot, sure, that they, their vote doesn't count if it's.
Yeah.
Next.
Otherwise they're voting.
What if they're voting, you know, something?
Clean up.
Booty for as well.
Yeah.
There was some changes on ES, but nothing that was good, really in-depth discussed, more cleanup, the rest is all cleanup.
Page 15.
It's the shell.
For seven.
Oh, except for, yeah, the leases.
MOUs?
Push back the shell.
So, correct.
Okay, I already put that in. Mine, forget it.
A move we call the op, the open session and going to. But will we hold committee of the hall and going to hold the session?
I'll second him.
Or she made the second. Those meetings hold on a regular session. Any discussion on that? On favor?
Alright.
Alright, we're back in open session.
I'm on a 10-minute break, I need a cigarette.
No, you do not.
Have a gummy.
I don't smoke.
You don't smoke anymore.
That's the only way we can get a break is if you won't have a cigarette.
He says that's what keeps them alive.
Yeah.
We, we wouldn't have very much.
We can do it, Cam, we can do it.
We can plow out.
You know, some, there are some staff who could use a five-minute break.
No.
Isn't that you?
Let's get her done.
Alright.
There, there are some staff who could.
See, there's more people that wanna just get up.
Never mind.
Give O'Call time to smoke again, even though he doesn't smoke.
Yeah.
Five minutes.
Alright, we're moving on then, we're, we're.
Jay, did you get lost in this discussion? We need a five-minute break.
We have to vote on it? Take a 10-minute break.
Five.
Well, now it's 10, we only asked for.
Five.
We'll be done in.
I'll make a motion to bring it.
Okay. We know where we are. Okay, we need to.
Make a motion to adopt the rules of order as discussed in the committee.
Second.
Second. Motion made in second.
Adopt them.
With the change.
As the whole.
With the change.
With the changes.
Nope, that's.
As three in time.
Committee of the whole.
As general consensus are agreed upon, right? Where you understand the motion?
So, so what we'll do, consistent with what you did years ago, make your motion, uh, assuming it's approved, we'll draft a resolution with the new clean version, for you to formally adopt that resolution at next month's meeting?
Formally adopt. Okay, so. We have a motion to. To adopt it.
Second.
Yep. More discussion on.
Oh, yes, we won't need, we don't have to have a resolution if we adopt it now with the changes.
Right, we won't.
Well, the, yes, so the, the formal rules will be, will be adopted by you, but we're gonna bring the resolution with the clean version, just to make sure that what we end up codifying is exactly what you've adopted today. It's just cleanup.
We confirm, we confirm, we adopt, confirm what we're adopting today.
We get another bite now.
All in favor?
Alright.
All in favor. Either motion on a resolution, uh, 1724. Camping plans, budgets, add, and then secure position for investigator.
The district attorney here.
I need a motion on it.
I'll make a motion to bring it to the floor.
Second. Made the second. All in favor?
Alright.
Most, we have the district attorney here. Still sitting there.
Still sitting.
Is anybody got any questions of the district attorney reference to the resolution that is presented? And on 1724, we have a copy. I think you should make the comment, long as you're here. Well, that's fine if you'd like to.
One of the reasons um, we have a need for this, um, and I'm sure you're aware, um, there is a shortage of, particularly, I think in the municipal, having trouble filling positions for police officers. But we also need follow-up um, as a result of some of that, because especially with victim cases, um, especially domestic stuff. You know, a lot of times our, our officers are so busy, they get called to a, a domestic hall, there may or may not be an arrest made that night, but um, I don't, you know, I'm not a doctor, but you know, um, I do know that bruises sometimes take a few days to appear. Um, and so we need to have some follow-up on that, maybe some pictures taken. Um, and frankly, uh, you know, our, our patrol officers just don't, they don't have the time, they are so busy with what the, what, just trying to, trying to keep the order, you know, we've got a, a limited number of officers around, we have, in Polk County geographically is just a huge area, so um, we wanna be able to tighten up our cases, we wanna be able to make our charging decisions for those people that aren't arrested. Want to be able to review those cases and make charging decisions quickly and bring them into court and get.
Okay. Anybody have any questions as a reference? You have a backlog of cases, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we have some charging positions that are that are six months and older.
Go ahead, Jim.
So do you plan on bringing that next year for a full year for the budget?
If if he works out, and he's been doing some for us already, and he's 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 an excellent, he's a a former, a retired investigator from up in Douglas County, and he is trained in forensic interviews. He's got, my God, I think he's got over thirty years of experience dealing with a lot of victim crimes. And if 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 it works out and he wants to stick around, so far he seems to enjoy it, then most likely, yes.
Have you discussed that with law enforcement?
I have, in fact, before I brought the resolution, I talked with sheriff about.
I talked to you about this, and you thought we were extremely fortunate, man, to have some hearing.
Absolutely, yeah.
Jay?
Yes.
We spent quite a bit of time talking about this in general government. I think, Kim, to your point, if it does come back, we will get another look at it before it becomes a permanent full-time position. So that's why it's listed as limited up here.
Yeah.
So we did have that discussion right up front, and we will, if that comes at the time, and there's still short of support, we'll get another look at that before we just pass it forward.
Anybody else have any discussions? Or comment or debate? Hey. Thanks a lot. Thanks, chief.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve a resolution. Uh, seventeen twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve seventeen twenty-four. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Same side. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You bet. Good luck. Let us know what's going. And now we need to move to. I move to accept. Need a motion? Eighteen twenty-four, bring it to the floor.
Second the motion?
Motion made and seconded, bring it to the floor for discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Discuss. Anybody have anything?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Make the motion.
Motion made and seconded to.
Then do you have a discussion?
Had the discussion, always said.
Yep, I love it.
It's like the five-minute break.
Yeah, that's spending some money today.
Spencer General.
Point of order, Jay. I think you, if a motion is made, again, even to accept.
Yes.
You need to ask if there's any further discussion.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Jim?
How did we miss this much? What I'm asking, do we have a presentation? How did we miss this many things? Uh, and we got one coming up, the treasure. Uh, I guess I didn't see where, now it's thirty thousand, then there's another one for forty-one.
It's a carryover.
Does it have Dan here?
This is hard. Hold on. Only Jay can call.
We have Dan. Dan is here, and he can speak to your concerns.
Okay.
Iowa.
This is just to carry forward funds that were not, were already allocated, but were not spent in the calendar year. Those projects are still in place. We're moving those funds into the forward budget year to be utilized in twenty-four, even they were originally earmarked in twenty-three. There's no additional spending.
We challenged this at the time. Dan, do you have comments on that?
Couldn't phrase it better than the supervisor did, sir.
Well, you discussed it quite thoroughly with all of us, and he was, he was the one that was questioned at the time, yeah.
It's so people understand that we're not doing this. That's why I wanted to explain.
It really was. All the non-lapsed. Any more discussion on it or questions, concerns? Okay, need a motion to approve.
Al.
Motion was made and seconded to approve it, presented. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Now we're on resolution.
Nineteen twenty-four.
Nineteen.
It's a square.
Need a motion.
I'll make a motion to bring resolution nineteen twenty-four to the floor for discussion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to bring board for discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we have, uh, boards open for discussion.
And we have. Would you like me to explain it?
Well, I. Yes.
Okay.
Could you explain what we might want to discuss?
Basically, part of the last resolution was the thirty thousand that we had allocated for a uh, upgrade to our tax programming software. When we started moving forward with this, we discovered that the software itself upgrade fee is the thirty thousand. And but the fees for the software are going up from seventeen thousand to forty-one thousand, I think it is, forty-one, five, eighteen, seventy-eight. That I wasn't expecting, and it wasn't allocated in the twenty twenty-four budget. So what we're asking to do is to get that allocated in this budget. There will be, it will be under the forty-one thousand, but we don't know how much at this time. So we're asking for the full forty-one thousand. We'll return to the general fund any that's unspent of that specifically for the upgrade service fees. When we started looking for upgrading our computer programming software, there's two main companies that do it in Wisconsin. Catalyst, which is the one that we're currently going with, and then also Transcendent. They both do approximately thirty counties in the state, so that's sixty out of the seventy-two. A couple have homemade systems, a couple have still AS four hundred systems, et cetera. The last time Polk County did upgrade their taxes, uh, software was two thousand and three, which was my first year as treasurer, so that was an adventure. Sarah was here at that time also, so she was involved in that. The software is not just for my office. It's also used by the land information office, the property lister. And then also, it's going to be used in the future by the county clerk's office, and they are going to bring in the dog licensing program, so it's all under one. Right now, their office handles, people, different municipalities do it different ways, have different programs. Some are homemade, some are using different softwares. The main reason we chose Catalyst over Transcendent, because they both have pros and cons. They both do a great job. They both have things that they do a little better than the other program and a little worse than the other program. Is the main one, there's two main issues. One was the cost, because we already have Catalyst, an upgrade cost is thirty thousand, whereas if we go to Transcendent, it would be about a hundred and seventy thousand. So. Oh, yeah. I don't like that number either, so. The other thing is that the Catalyst system includes the municipal receipting program that's used by all thirty-six municipalities in January, December, and January to receipt taxes. Transcendent doesn't, and so we'd have to partner with a third party, which would then involve a whole host of other costs and training and everything. And so this really does keep it under one umbrella. We will be working. The only thing that's going to change then is the service fees, Catalyst service fees. They were thirty-six thousand, seven hundred, so this is forty-one thousand, five, eighteen. Catalyst, I'm I'm sorry, Transcendent was the thirty-six, Catalyst is the forty-one. Transcendent asked for a ten-year contract, and they didn't tell us if the fees would change in those ten years. Catalyst asked for a four-year contract, and they laid out their fees. They go up about, I think it's about four percent a year and three percent. I can't remember exactly what it is. The fees for GCS have stayed at seventeen thousand for the past couple of years. It's paid, portion's paid by my office and a portion that's paid by Land Information, and we asked, it looks like they said that approximately five percent of that with service would be for the pet licensing, so we're going to be working at the budget with the county clerk's office, and they've already, we've already talked to them about it a little bit. But then we'll set up for the twenty twenty-five calendar year, we'll set up how much for each of our officers are allocated towards the fees that we pay to the information technology department for the service fees at that time. So.
Anybody have any questions? Anything for the clarification.
Talk fast, but if you have any questions, let's let me know. I know Dan had asked some questions, so I emailed him.
Thank you.
Yep. And I wasn't here that, they go to general government. I wasn't here, I was homesick, but my, uh, chief deputy Elsa Thompson had.
Yeah, she was good.
Discussed it, yep. We've been obsessing about it for about a year or so.
Okay.
Go ahead. How about, can IT fix this and help with?
It goes through IT. The actual work, if there's a problem with our equipment, then obviously our IT department takes care of it. If there's a part, a problem with the program itself, then their service takes care of it, and that's part of the service fees.
Part of the service fees, all right.
I believe it's all web-based, so most of it should be done there and if there are issues, not on our end, unless our network is just down or something, but it's web-based.
And it is. What we are moving from is a desktop version to a web, uh, web-based version, which will be easier for everybody to maneuver and use on your computers and for people who are using it from the municipality end.
Taking it from a mechanical base to a cloud base.
Yes.
Any more discussion or question? Cam, thank you. All right. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
To approve nineteen twenty-four?
Yes. I'll second that.
And second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution twenty-four. I'm ship for the age program.
I'd make a motion that we postpone until the May County Board meeting.
Second. Motion made and seconded to postpone resolution twenty twenty-four of the May.
I would only say, because we actually had members at our last meeting when we got the presentation at committee that aren't on. I think the, I'm not comfortable myself yet with just agreeing it, putting it to a vote tonight. I think give the, at least give the general government committee another chance to review it or discuss it for everybody another month to maybe get more familiar with it.
So is that a motion?
Postpone until the May County Board meeting.
Mo- motion to refer it back to committee?
Well, I suppose, refer it back.
Refer back to general. Okay.
Second?
Or the second. Prove that. Prove the second. Any more discussion on it?
Did the, the general government get the ordinance? I mean.
They had, my understanding is.
We just got it yesterday or whenever.
This is the draft ordinance. We have not looked at where in our code of ordinances we would put this, so.
So for a point of order, does this need a public hearing? It's as an ordinance, it doesn't.
Not a zoning ordinance. Only zoning and land use ordinances require public hearings. Doesn't mean you can't have one for any ordinance, but only zoning ordinances require the public hearing.
Only zoning required. This one would not, even though it's an ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Same sign. Okay, we're bringing up. There are no appointments at the county board chair meets at this time. We've we've reviewed everything that's applicable at the present time. What we're going to do, or I'm, I'm now on the fact that there are non-standing committees that have not been appointed. There are a number of them as listed in your packet.
Yeah.
I would hope that everyone look at the the non-standing committees that they are presently on. It's affirmed that they would wish to stick with it. Abandon the idea, or anybody that feel one of the, the elements that have been vacated by the change in chairman. The, see if they would wish to participate, and one of them are willing to, uh, vote their efforts toward that. If so, you need to contact me or Mo, and let us know so we can have this and hopefully fill these vacancies next month. Okay? Now, that's about all I have.
Administrator's report.
I have, I have one appointment and one now that'll be deferred until next month.
Yep.
The appointment of Bonnie Eastfold to the Polk County Housing Authority. She comes with a recommendation from the housing committee. Director of nursing for twenty-plus years and is interested in serving on the housing authority.
Made that appointment?
I moved to the. The director called me and told me about her. We're very, very fortunate. Yeah, she's, she's quite a lady. Uh, okay, uh, county administrators, you have any other reports?
You got, you got to follow. You got a motion on the floor.
Need a motion? Yeah, I, I made the motion. To, to approve his.
What?
His appointment?
Second.
Motion made and seconded is approve the appointment of administrator. All in favor? Any good discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, do you have anything else to report?
Uh, you're skipping down seventeen then?
Yeah.
Uh, I'll, I'll make my report short since we're, um, been in this room for six hours. Just a couple of things. Our own Misty Anton was named mentor of the year from the Wisconsin Jail Association. Very proud of that. Lisa McMahon has received her certificate for emergency manager professional at Sales Taxes Arc, due to, up in March. One thing, uh, Don mentioned at general government was we're in the budget process, and we're going to start the budget process early. And one of the, a couple of the things we're working on, we do have one application for a housing application for seventy thousand off the program that was approved by the boards. We're vetting that application. The other watch items we have right now are medical, are are two items, medical costs. Claims are very high right now, so we're watching our, our medical costs. The other one comes out of CSD, and that's placement cost per kids. And these, these type of placements deal with, um, it's that are more high placement costs, they're assault, vandalism, sexual assault, incest, arson, animal mutilation, and expulsion from school. Six of the nine kids we have are very, very high in, uh, special needs adoptions. And when I talk about high costs on these, these facilities are very expensive. Staff is working very hard to mitigate these, to lower these costs. Right now, um, some of these placement costs can go from nine thousand dollars a month to twenty-two thousand dollars a month. With all these high placements, it's projected right now, we're at right around hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars a month, which will be a budget impact of over a million dollars. Staff is working on, uh, doing all we can to find a placement for these kids and get them back. County is extremely well at that, but I just want the board to be aware that these are items that are coming up on the budget that we're watching, and these are mandated stuff that we, that we have to have, so. Just want to make you aware of that. With that, um, great news there, I just want to thank you guys for your service and, and congratulations on being part of the board. Look forward to working with all you. The door is always open. My cell phone is always on. You can ask my wife that. Tell you that, so. Anytime you need something, please call, um, and we'll help you out. Again, staff does a wonderful job. We can do anything you want. We just can't do everything you want, because we have limited funds, so. Thank you.
Remember, Bob. Just kidding.
Okay, thank you. The reason I skipped you for Terry. Okay. Uh, update with sheriff's law.
Thank you. This will be brief. Thank you. I just wanted, I asked, uh, Administrator Norby if I could have a few minutes just to do a tribute tonight. Uh, Deputy Mike Severson, he was killed in my, in the line of duty, um, in his anniversary ten years ago, uh, on Sunday. So this is what I shared on our social media. So on Sunday, it marks the anniversary that Mike has been gone already ten years. Um, I personally had the privilege to live by Mike for fifteen years. He was a neighbor. Uh, Mike was an ambassador for law enforcement. He was, he touched everybody he knew. He, he touched their lives in such a positive way. Um, including my family, so, um, he really is the epitome of the ultimate sacrifice. Mike was shot in the line of death, like, and then lived his life as a quadriplegic. And such a positive individual. Um, this is a little write-up about some of the things he's done. Um, I got to know Mike's family over the years. In fact, Mike's sister Jane is one of our bailiffs, so we have a constant Severson connection at the sheriff's office and those that knew Mike, I'm sure we're very touched by him, so I just wanna trip, pay tribute to him and, and thank you. All I got.
And that he maintained one of the best attitudes I've ever seen.
Absolutely, fucking bleeding. Alright, thank you.
Okay. Supervisor's report. Any meetings that you may have attended that were not discussed, unaware of? The supervisors' reports. I've seen only got one. Are you gonna pull?
Motion put the chair.
That, motion made and seconded, we're doing all in favor.
Good thing I had a gummy.